Pledge allegiance, even though many of us may not have a flag handy, but let's go with the pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America. To the republic. One nation under God.
That little rough guy is gonna practice that.
I'd also, I'd also like to take a moment of silence for David Reisick, who recently passed away. For those who may not know, Dave was a longtime St. Albans resident. Lived, I think, on Forest Hill Drive, three kids, all went through the system. Dave served this country by working for immigration for many years. So let's just take a moment of silence in memory of Dave Reisick. Thank you. And also, I know we have a number of, a number of residents joining us. I'd like to at least offer them the opportunity for any public comment if anyone has it. Is there anyone like to say anything? Hearing none, we will move on from that.
Tim, do you want me to go through the list one by one? There are a couple of people we need to know who they are because their names aren't showing up anyway.
Okay, if you want to take that piece, Chip.
Could the person who is showing up as Galaxy S10 Plus, please identify yourself?
Marjorie Wheeler.
Hello, Marjorie. Thanks for joining us.
You're welcome.
And there's this, this guy Bill Sawyer, I'm not sure who that is.
Yeah, you know, thanks for mentioning Dave, I worked with him for many years.
You're welcome, Bill. Chip, do you have anyone else you needed to identify?
Let's see. There are a couple of people that were on that I see aren't anymore, so, you know, maybe a couple more opportunities for public comment before the meeting's over, if they pop back on.
Okay. So we're gonna move on to, we'll move on to item number three. Dom, do you want to say a few words on that before we touch base with staff?
I think I'll let individual department heads speak for themselves and how they're handling the operations from their end, and then as need be on the backend, I'll clean up.
Okay. So, starting with A, Chief Taylor?
Good evening, everybody. Really, it appears that the new things that have occurred, as of course there continues to be an upsurge in cases across the state of Vermont. And late this afternoon, I learned that NMC has announced the death of one of their, one of the patients. Right now, the governor's office over the weekend had requested that we, law enforcement, put some time and effort into researching the hotels in our areas to see if they were still operating business as usual. And we found, with the exception of back in time, we found that all four in here in St. Albans were operating business as usual. I think that Commissioner Sherling has actually issued a memorandum reminding everybody of the potential consequences for violating the executive order. And I think we've been asked to check in to make sure that the hotels are in fact operating in compliance of the exceptions provided under the governor's executive order. There's a lot of talk going on today about interstate transportation across state lines. And New Jersey, Rhode Island, Connecticut, and New York have actually put troopers at their borders, and they're turning people around. Nobody has made anything official of it, but the governor is certainly recommending that all Vermonters heed the CDC warning about the 14-day moratorium on domestic travel. As everybody knows by now, the police department is operating at phase three of its continuity of operations plan, which is a modified version. There have been a couple of bumps in the road, but other than that, things are going pretty well. We are trying to address calls by telephone when that's appropriate. The problem is, of course, there are a number of different opinions about when it's appropriate, so people are learning as we move forward what it's, when it's appropriate and when it's not. An example that I would give you that Dom had brought to my attention was a lady called this weekend about some needles. She had found some syringes, and she was given misinformation by the dispatcher that we weren't going out to pick them up because of exposure issues, that, that's not true. The dispatcher has been corrected, and this afternoon, we made contact and apologized to the caller, and we picked up those syringes. We are seeing a decline in what we would consider routine calls, although we are seeing hints of maybe things to come. You know, we're being tipped at the car dealerships, that there might be people looking at, maybe orchestrating some catalytic converter thefts with the car dealerships closed, so we're paying particular attention to that. I think there is a projection that domestics will increase during this time because people will be confined in their homes, and the whole family will be there. So far, we've had one incident where someone who was not authorized to be at a location showed up, and once they forced their way in, suggested that they were contaminating everybody inside. So that's just one more of those things that we have to contend with. Some of our businesses are not accepting cash now, they're only using a card. And talking to one of the managers, I was informed, the reason for that is they don't want their employees to handle money because it's, it's potentially, you know, infected or has the potential of being infected. So they're having the customer themselves put their card in the machine, and, and they're also posting signs so that if anybody had any ideas about, you know, being involved in something mischievous, that they're aware that there's no cash on the premises. The, if we have to move to phase four, that would be a loss of personnel. Then, then we will have to probably cancel any requested time off by any officers or dispatchers indefinitely. We'll go to a streamlined schedule. I do have two people who are presently quarantined officers. We're waiting to see how that turns out as we move forward. The overflow site, as most of you are aware, is set up and it's, it's at the ready. I think we established today, Kate, that we're gonna be communicating more regularly to maintain some idea of where we're at in this process. But it's ready to be activated, as I understand it, when it's needed. We continue not to have PPEs for all the officers. I received a rather lengthy complaint today from an individual who is convinced that the police are infecting everybody in the community because they're not wearing face masks all the time. And I would tell you, we don't have face masks enough for the officers to do that. They each have one, and they're using it over and over, and they're storing it in a paper bag in their cruiser in between the calls that are appropriate to wear it on. You know, if there's a social distance to begin with, there really is no need for them to wear the mask. Where they wear the mask is when they go inside of residences or homes, and there is some concern there. The food system, I've been asked a lot about the food system because as this progresses, people are learning that people might be in a difficult situation when it comes to food. The emergency operations center being operated out of Montclair has taken that all into consideration. There are things called PODs, which is an acronym for point of distribution. There are PODs around the county in which food will be distributed when we reach the point where we feel that it's appropriate to do that. And I believe the National Guard will take point on that. I'm told that the food shelves and Martha's Kitchen have ample food. The issue for them is their volunteers tend to be older and at risk. So that would be the consideration there. The department has collapsed any extra teams, the street crimes unit has been temporarily collapsed, so those officers can be co-participate in patrol functions as we operate on this different schedule. We've kept two different functions up, that's BCI, which is criminal investigations. Part of the reason for that is we're required by law to do unattended death investigations, home deaths. And then the last two weeks, we've had four. Those are time consuming, so I have to have a detective certified who can do that, to go out and do that, though he is assisting in other ways. We've also left the domestic investigator in the position he's in, in anticipation of an increase in, in domestic activity. Just trying to think here as I look at my list. 911 has been, our dispatch center has been in full lockdown for a week now. No one is allowed to go inside there, the door is locked without having their temperature taken first. And if it's 100 or more, then you're not allowed to go in. We've just started doing that in the department in general. So when officers show up, we have a touchless thermometer, we're taking temperatures, and if someone has a temperature of 100 or more, they're being sent home. Playgrounds, we talked a little bit about today, I won't spend a lot of time on it, except to say that that came up in a bigger discussion today in the state. And certainly, the preferred plan is to close playgrounds because these children don't know the difference, and they don't know that they shouldn't be congregating or, or playing with other kids. So I think that whatever needed to be done, or is either in the process of being done, or will be done. Last but not least, it looks like the president has been pretty vocal about pushing the date of, if you will, normalcy from Easter till now, the end of April. I would tell you, that's consistent with everything that we're hearing on the emergency management side of things that may first really looks like probably the date that most will shoot for, though I'm not sure every governor will necessarily fall in line with that. But we are being told that we are probably two to four weeks from being at the peak of this situation. And with that, you know, I can answer questions if you wish, but that's what I have for you.
Chief, a couple of things for you and Kate. That is, can you clarify for me the mask discussion? I had heard, read many times that the mask does not prevent you from getting the virus, but it does prevent you from sharing the virus. Could you, one of you two, give me an update on that?
Kate, you wanna take that?
Sure, yeah, I think that's, that's right, Tim. It's, certainly doesn't hurt you to wear a mask, but if you're not, like the chief said, just maintaining that social distance is enough. If you have the virus or even a cold, wearing a mask can help stop some of the larger particles, but it's really not a necessary thing as we go about daily life.
Yeah, and I would, I would tell you, Mr. Mayor, that based on what we're being told, the only time that the officers are wearing those masks is if they're inside an area where this individual is suspected of being positive or has been confirmed positive. And what they're trying to avoid is droplets, you know, the possibility of inhaling or, or having open contact with droplets in the air. And it could be from coughing, even talking, of course, but that's really a precautionary thing.
And my other question for you, Chief, is why don't you share a little bit about the parade, where that generated from? Because I think it was greatly appreciated.
The, so I had seen an article at the end of last week about a department, I don't know how big a department in Spain, that out of respect for the efforts of the medical people, they were doing a variation of that. They were showing up at a certain time and all getting out of their cars and saluting the medical facility to show the medical people their appreciation. And I basically felt like that was a good thing. And I think right now, when we have so many negative things coming up every day, it's good to have something positive and constructive, constructive that people can point to. I also think the medical people are finding themselves in a uniquely awkward situation. So we decided that once a week, on Monday at 6:00 in the evening, that we are going to have a law enforcement recognition and appreciation parade around the Northwest Medical Center. So we've invited members from other agencies, and I'm told that in the future, we will hopefully have more participants from the Border Patrol and the state police. But we just did it tonight for the first time. There were probably 15 cruisers, I was very proud of the showing of the St. Albans police. I think we had nine black and white cars in the front there with all their lights going, and it was, it was very moving to see how many people, staff, came out of the facility to see the police officers make a circle. It took less than 10 minutes, and I think it was greatly appreciated, and I think it gives us all something positive to point towards during this time when everybody's searching for good things.
Thank you, and I wasn't aware you were gonna do it every Monday, but that's good to know, thank you.
We're kind of hoping that law enforcement across the state might join in and do it the same day at the same time in their respective counties.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Why can't the community get involved in that?
Well, mostly because of the social distancing thing. You know, what we don't want to do is Yeah, but here's the problem is if we suddenly just do everybody, not that it wouldn't be appreciated, because I'm certain that it would be, but it would probably be a much bigger interruption of traffic and the amount of time it would take to do that. So we're really trying to keep it highly visible, if you will. It would, no, there would be no intention of excluding anybody. In fact, one of the things I was thinking that we could all talk about is when this is all over with, maybe we ought to have a parade, and it ought to be right downtown, and we ought to celebrate all the health workers.
Marjorie, go ahead, Marjorie.
Sorry. Because I volunteer for, with DCF and Washington County Mental Health Services. And I know my husband works for AOE, and so for us, we have to travel, you know, and we only do it a couple days a week. And I, we're trying to like come back to this community, if that makes sense. Hence why I'm joining this meeting tonight. Because I'm originally from the area, so I'm, I'm just trying to like get an idea of what I can do to maybe get more involved in the community here. First of all, I have Parkinson's, so it can't work, so I, I want to volunteer. So I'm thinking that maybe I can kind of get some ideas out of this meeting of where I might be able to fit in, maybe.
Thank you, Marjorie. So, Marjorie, the last presenter, if you will, will be Chip Sawyer. And Chip has been the sort of the liaison between the community organizations. And he'll be touching, I think, Chip, I hope you will have a little information about what some of those organizations are looking for. So let's see what Chip has to offer, and you can possibly connect with him, he'll be a good resource for you.
One of the things that my neighbor upstairs and I have talked about is doing a parade, and that's why I was asking Gary about that.
Yep.
Maybe if you could just keep me in mind, Gary.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marjorie.
You're welcome.
We're gonna move on to Marty Manahan.
Mr. Mayor.
Tim?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
If possible, ask Gary a question first.
Sure, go ahead.
Gary, I have, I was chatting with Kate LaRose some, one point last week. She was mentioning something about peerless still being open, and that a lot of the peerless employees are all congregating in their smoking area or whatever without practicing social distancing. I'm not sure if they're supposed to be open, or if there's, if they're, I can't imagine they're an essential employer if they're just making suits. The other thing she mentioned today is that she thought last week that Camp Killcare was open, or people were there, they were camping there. Students are going there with their cars, and they weren't practicing social distancing. Are we patrolling that at all?
We can look into it, sir. What, what basically I've told the officers is that they're aware of somebody who might be functioning or operating in violation of the executive order, that they should stop and talk with those individuals, maybe give them a copy of the executive order that they're referring to specifically, and advise them that they're not supposed to be doing that. We have been asked by the governor's office not to get too involved in any enforcement side of things without the direction of the Attorney General TJ Donovan in regard to this. I will tell you, on peerless, I got a call this morning from the manager who had asked a similar question. And we did go over and check, and there were probably six or eight vehicles there, and a sheriff's vehicle, I know they hired the sheriff's department during the day to be present over there, but it certainly was not a workforce. Now, it might have been people in the office, it wasn't a workforce. And the other thing that I would share with you is, I had also got the call about one of the brewery, brewing companies in town, and the social distancing doesn't include family members. So if, for example, you have a family brewery and family members are present, that wouldn't violate the social distancing thing.
Right.
But I will certainly take a look at, we'll take a look and see if we do have gatherings going on down at Killcare. I can tell you that I am being told that the rail trail is quite congested when it's, when the weather permits.
Wow, no, the peerless, she had shared a, shared a photo, they must have shut down since then because she had shared a photo that she had taken with a big crowd of people under their tent out there, so they must have shut down.
But I'm happy to have the officers check on it.
Thank you, Gary, appreciate it.
All right.
Jim, just to follow up on that, Killcare has been open all winter, the gates have been open. I talked to Richard Copsway, he was down there last week, no one was there when he was there, he was commenting on that. But that is, it's still unmanned, it's an open park, so it is open to the public.
Maintaining that social distance, that's putting everybody at risk.
No, I get that piece of it. I guess my comment to that is we can't be all places for all gatherings. I mean, we need to stress it as a, as a city and community that the social distancing. The other piece I would share about peerless is, with my knowledge of it, is that they had 80 cargo containers, because the ports are not closed. They had 80 cargo containers of merchandise being shipped to St. Albans. And at some point, they had to be unloaded, else we were, I mean, it clogs up the transportation system, and there's a number of issues related to that. So I think they've, they've addressed that, that's why staff is so low as what it is now to Chief's point. So I think, I think there's some complaints out there with people not knowing the full story.
Right.
Share that piece with you.
Right, okay, appreciate it.
Does anyone else have any other questions for Chief? Hearing none, I would move to Marty Manahan.
The chief's always a tough act to follow. I try to get ahead of him in department head meetings, but. So everything regarding our departments are continuing to run smoothly. We've got operators at the water plant, both water plants, Fairfax and McQuam. We've split the operators up, so we have one individual at Fairfax, one individual at McQuam during the day, and then one individual at both plants again for the second shift. We did the same thing at the wastewater plant, we have Brian and another operator, as well as an operator in training on the day shift that are split up and practicing the social distancing. And then we have another individual that comes in on the second shift to make sure all the required tests and required maintenance is continuing to happen on a daily basis and a weekly basis. PW, our crew, we had split those guys up, again, in an effort to try to separate them as much as possible. But when the governor put out his executive order, we decided to put them on the bench and only respond to emergencies. We've had probably half a dozen sewer backups, mostly, all of them actually, have been on the homeowner's side. And we're finding that it's probably the result of flushing things down the toilet that they shouldn't be, that they don't normally in light of all the sanitizing efforts and wipes and everything that people are using. So I'd just like to remind people, anybody that's listening, to refrain from doing that, throw those in the garbage, and continue just to use toilet paper down the toilet. We've got a lot of projects in the wings, but fortunately, or unfortunately, I guess, everybody is on the sidelines as well. So a lot of those projects are waiting for everybody to come back to work. The BFA project, we were supposed to go up and do some work, waterline work with them last week, but everybody's at home. So at this point, that's where we stand in public works.
With the, one question for you, with the early spring we've had, a lot of people have gotten outside and raked the lawns. And I see that a number of households are loading their plastic bags and leaving them by the curb. I don't know if that's, is that an expectation that we're gonna pick those up? Because I don't know that haulers are picking yard waste up anymore.
I hope not, because that's not a practice we typically do.
No, I didn't think so, I just, just seems that a number of bags have ended up on the, have ended up on the curb.
Yeah, I haven't seen that, but no, we don't typically pick that up from, they can bring it out to Hudak's or, but we don't typically pick that up.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of Marty?
No.
Hearing none, we'll move on to Tom. Tom, what would you like to share with us?
Sure, just a few things. All the standard business functions that we do, making payroll every two weeks, getting bills paid, are going on as normal. We've got, in every case, at least three of us that can do those things in the event someone gets sick or is unavailable. We didn't go into the office once a week, but just once a week and just one person. So that's pretty manageable and not a big deal. We have gone and changed about 50 passwords online because in this day and age, what tends to happen whenever there's a crisis is people don't pay attention to things like their credit cards and their bank accounts. So to make sure the city is protected, we've, we've done that. The, the other piece is I've secured so far $3.5 million in available credit if we need it. There's no indication we need it now, but there is no reason not to secure it because it's free until we use it. We're watching closely water and sewer bills, those are due at the end of April, and then taxes in May. But water and sewer bills are sort of the canary in the coal mine to see if this is causing issues with people making regular payments. But we don't have the information at this point to say one way or the other. So keep you posted on that and, and see what occurs. The other issue is normally we would go to the, to the bond markets in the summer. And the bond markets have been great for a number of years now, but they've gone a little wild lately, and so we've been in contact with the bond bank to, just to see what's gonna happen there, and it's too soon to tell, and the market's gonna always change. just to see what's gonna happen there. And it's too soon to tell and the market's gonna always change, but we're prepared to give the city the resources it needs when things go back to normal and Marty's running sidewalk projects again and Fonda's going on, so we can still operate on our, on our lines of credit and, and get through this until the markets return to some level of normalcy. And hopefully they'll be there pretty soon. I've also been in a lot of contact with Nina at RJC. The courts are in essence furloughed. And to some extent it impacts her staff. There's been no indication that's gonna impact the grants that pay for her staff. But we haven't waited on the state to tell us that we're, we're aggressively staying in contact with those folks to make sure that if there's any indication they're gonna cut funding to the city that we, we know first and we're on top of that and we're prepared for it. So I think in terms of helping to manage the city's bottom line and staying on top of any things we face, I think we're doing okay. To some extent, because department work has slowed, it gives us a little breathing room, so we're actually taking advantage and preparing for some of the audit work we normally wouldn't do until the summer. So I think we're, we're running fine for now and I think whatever the city faces, there shouldn't be extra challenges caused by my department. I should be able to help people run smooth as needed.
Okay. Anything else, Tom?
Oh, that's all I have unless Tom wants to add anything.
Does anyone have any questions for Tom? I would, I would say that I thought I was, the process of removing me from the office was taking effect when I, the pass code to the door at the city hall was changed and I wasn't notified.
That wasn't me. That might have been Kristen.
I thought that was the first sign I was on my way out.
See, we did take a vote and we decided by one to let you keep a code, so.
Were you the one?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll leave that to chance.
We'll move on to Curry. Curry, are you on board with us?
Hi there, everybody. How are you?
Hello, how are you?
Good, Curry.
Good, good, good. So from the clerk's office, everything is running. We are remote. I'm in the office most every day, but randomly mostly to conduct deposits. All of our functions are online by mail or are through our Dropbox. The real estate recordings are still getting into our online land records. There are no longer appointments available, whereas there were in the beginning of all of this. Deeds and recordings are happening because remote notarization was enacted, so people can still get their title transfers into me. I haven't had a ton of marriage licensing, but I have heard from other clerks that it is going up, maybe in light of everything that's going on. But either way, all of the vital record certifications I can do online and by mail. The liquor control board, there's just a small update that I heard there is that any licensee that is current as of April 30th would then have an extension to June 30th without having to do anything. So just to note there, I may be having at our council meetings a little longer than anticipated for our certain applicants. And then just H 681 did pass today, and so that just involves elections. It's a temporary bill for 2020 and it included things, open meeting, other items, but mostly for my concern is elections. And that involved possible mailing of ballots to every registered voter. Petitions for the primary are no longer necessary. Possible extended election hours and thirty days before the election ballots can go into the tabulator. And there's several other items, but that was kind of new, so that is down the line, but they are prepared for it and as is my office. So I can keep you updated there. Those are all the updates that I have.
Thank you, Curry. Does anyone have any questions of Curry?
Curry, this, Jim, you, you said that passed today, that election bill?
Yeah.
Okay. You're gonna need more staff to help you with that if you start getting ballots back in.
Oh, yeah. I'm very excited to be more involved with our awesome VCA.
Yeah, I'll bet you are. That's it.
Thanks, Jim.
Any other questions for Curry?
Hearing none. I just want to say, Tim, so behind the scenes, I've got to work a lot with Curry and my department's got to work, work a lot with Curry and Sarah and she's just been awesome to work with through all this and it's been, just been really helpful and great. Just wanted to make sure I gave her a shout out.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to Chip Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wondering if we can take a moment out. We have a couple more folks who I need to get their full names for the attendance. The person who's logged in is Leonard. Give your last name, please. When I'm unmuted yourself. Guess we'll come back to that. The person who's logged in is 2336431. Identify yourself. Well.
They're muted as well, so.
Okay.
We'll come back to that.
Yeah. So the Planning and Development Department has moved to working remotely like everyone else. We are continuing regular operations so far. Daily tasks and the projects that we are maintaining aren't being delayed or canceled. So we're also doing a lot to support communications efforts during the COVID-19 pandemic. We're doing a lot on the city Facebook page, the city website. Also pushing information out to businesses downtown to help continue the downtown program. It's obviously hurt a lot of the downtown businesses very hard. There's a lot happening, a lot of support from the state and from the federal government for businesses and for their employees. And we're doing our best to, you know, point people in the right direction. The city's stance at this point is to, rather than sort of get in the middle of both volunteers and people in need, people who'd like to contribute and trying to be a matchmaker, we're just making sure that the, that it's easy to find out where to go for the help you might need or where to go to help contribute where you'd like to contribute. There are four main organizations that we're trying to keep in touch with. That's the Samaritan House Homeless Shelter, the Northwest Family Foods Food Shelf, AgeWell, which does Meals on Wheels for a three county area, if not more, and Martha's Kitchen, of course. And there was a question during the meeting about, you know, where, where some of the volunteer opportunities are. We do know that the food shelf, and I believe Martha's, don't have a pressing volunteer need at the moment. What they need are monetary donations more than anything. Samaritan House also needs donations and just, I think, completed a sort of a really quick fundraising appeal that, that they seem to be really happy with the results so far, but there will probably be a further need. The last we knew Samaritan House also had a need of volunteers to help keep an eye on the shelter because they're open 24/7 now. And then AgeWell, which does Meals on Wheels, has a, a pretty severe volunteer need in, across many of the counties in Franklin County and surrounding us. Especially because many of their volunteers up to now for Meals on Wheels are what you'd call the susceptible population for COVID-19, so they're actually looking for some folks who might be less susceptible to go out and provide some much needed meals to all of their clients in the area. There is a background piece of, of that volunteer opportunity and, and also they have procedures in place to, you know, to maintain social distancing while they're providing the service. I also know that the city and the town have a Google Doc out there. It's a little survey that you can fill out. If you would like to volunteer or contribute, you can say who you are, how to contact you and some ideas of what you can do to help. And I know there's at least one mutual aid effort that's being run by Franklin County Caring Communities, which is also a place where people can go to fill out how they could contribute and maybe get matched. The United Way of Northwest Vermont's doing the same thing. We can certainly reach out. Anyone can contact really any, any city department head if you have any particular interest and they can put you in touch with me. But also on the city webpage, if you look, the, we have a link to our sort of COVID-19 info, both on the left and the right, which we're trying to maintain with links and information for, you know, businesses, employees, people who have needs and people who would like to volunteer. It's a great place to go for ideas. And also we're trying to maintain it as best we can with the information that we know about. We're moving to remote meetings for our boards. The Development Review Board has a remote meeting set up on Monday, which I think will go pretty well. And we've moved most of the notices for permitting decisions and the, some of the assessing documents that have to be posted, we've put them on the website because obviously you can't come to the property services office to see them right now. So the department's doing a pretty good job of adjusting to the pandemic and the governor's safety orders.
Chip, I have a question.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Are we, or actually this might be more for Tom, but are we documenting, like when we're having meetings and we're spending time, basically anything COVID related? Are we docking that, documenting that separately in case we get a federal declaration? We might be able to reach the threshold to get some reimbursement?
Yeah, we are. We started that a few weeks ago, just in case that, that, that went through, so way ahead of you. Good question.
Okay, I'm, I'm thinking if we are sheltering homeless or we open that medical facility at Collins Pearly, that's gonna push us past the threshold.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Chip, can you just maybe share why the food shelf prefers donations over actual financial donations over actual food donation?
The messaging we've received from the food shelf is that they are very concerned with exposing their staff and volunteers to the pandemic or otherwise potentially exposing the people who need to come to the food shelf for food. We were told at one point that there were certain items the food shelf was running short on and they had a time for, set for donations, a certain window, but then I think after, after giving that a shot, they decided to change course and it was safer to avoid contamination by not accepting actual food themselves. They're focusing on monetary donations so that they can go to their regular distribution sources with those funds and access the food they need via their red, regular distribution methods, which are probably, you know, just a little easier to control in terms of the contamination piece than receiving random items delivered to the office.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any other questions of Chip?
Hey, Tim, this is Dom. I got one texted in from Tim Hawkins going back to Curry. Curry, can you unmute, unmute for a second?
Sure.
Tim's wondering if you could comment on how quickly the land records are being updated. Folks are doing title searches. How quickly is the daily recording making it into the computer?
So I have a little bit of a backlog. I think I'm up to the 19th right now, but I am heading in tomorrow to get it all caught up because obviously, yeah, it really is important to get them in there a lot faster. Just kind of adjusting to the work at home and the water bill rush, but tomorrow everything should be caught up and that will be prioritized in the office. This way researchers can get exactly what they need right off. On the website, we do have a listing of any unrecorded documents too. So if people want to see like what's at least in queue and the date and time that we've stamped it for, they're able to see that. And then if there are any other things that they need on those unrecorded documents, they can always reach out to us, but that will be a priority to get that in timely manner.
You're not able to update remotely, are you?
To get all the documents scanned in?
Yeah.
Kind of. It's a little involved. I'm pretty quick with it, so it doesn't take me very long. It, it's a little easier to do it in the office, but I could set it up remotely if need be.
Sure.
Any other questions for staff?
Tim, this, Jim, I've got another question for Curry regarding the elections. Curry, are you still there? I don't know what input you, you've had with the Secretary of State or other town clerks, but thinking of these, these mail-in ballots and I know how difficult it could be sometime when we're unfolding those things and feeding them into the tabulator, how they jam up a lot. Is there any consideration to do flats, flat envelopes, so that these things don't have to be folded off, folded up?
I think that's a very, very good consideration to have and I do check in a lot with the folks at the Elections Division and I even mentioned something recently about how we fold them anyway, changing it from a tri-fold to maybe just folding in half, but that's something that I'll definitely bring to them if that does come to the new normal for elections, for sure. That's really important.
And if we're gonna have thousands of ballots, it makes sense to do that.
Yes, definitely. Thank you. Yeah, let me, let me check in and see what the ideas they have and then when I find out, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I got one thought for Marty. Marty, have you given any thought to, with the early spring that we're having, this is very minor, I know, but I'm just curious as to, grass is gonna be growing soon. Will you have staff on board to address general maintenance type stuff?
Yes, we won't send them out during this executive order, but that's on our radar as soon as they're able to get out. Heath Wright is doing the sidewalk curb project this summer again and he's asked to start on that and I told him he couldn't do that until the order was lifted. We can't have people out there doing it, so it's on our radar. We'll definitely get to it as soon as we are able to get back.
Good, thank you. And then I'd just like to point out, for the entire council, I'd like to think at our next call, all of you will have a drop sheet like Chip does. So it presents a little bit better. And I, I'd like to see a little more design other than a rust color drop sheet.
Yeah, I know. I mean, you know, at least Chip could have had a design, you know. I must have a blanket.
It looked like a hasty hangup to me. It's like you might have just done it before the meeting.
This is a home improvement project that's been sitting for seven years and now it's my office.
If you all keep that in mind for the next call, I'd appreciate it. All right, so Dom, I'm gonna turn it over to you to, to pick up anything that might have been left out.
Sure, I think that pretty much covers it. Department heads are continuing to meet weekly and many of them I'm talking with daily about things that emerge. The chief and I are on the phone a lot. So, so far, so good. I think we're able to keep things moving remotely pretty well.
Yeah, I'd like to, on behalf of the council, just thank staff for taking ownership in this and making it work without any hitches. I think it's worked out very well. So thank you, everyone, for the time you put in.
Tim, I would just add, and you may want to speak to the blood draw we had last week. We've got another one coming up this Thursday that City Hall will be opened up for.
Yeah, so the blood draw was on the 26th, I believe it was. Chip put a lot of work on that, as did Kristen and Jeff as well to clean up afterwards, but the Red Cross could not say enough about the community of St. Albans and our efforts to assist them in trying to make up some of the lost blood draws. blood draws that they've lost out on due to a number of closures. So I think they had, they maxed out on appointments. They had 32 points donated. I think they would have been able to do many more if they had the staff, but they're limited in staffing as well. But they will be back again on the second. Chip, can you refresh my memory on time on that one? Is that an 8:30 start?
Yeah, last we knew that's an 8:30 to an 8:30 start.
To 2:30, I think.
Yeah, 8:30 to 2:30. It's on the city Facebook page and the poster is out front. They might extend it. And, and also I'd like to add, you know, at the downtown Facebook page, if you search for downtown St. Albans, it's not hard to find. We do have a link right at the top to a list we're maintaining. There are a lot of businesses in the city that are still doing whatever they can to stay open and serve the public and serve their customers, whether it be curbside or delivery. And I believe they're all trying to stay in compliance with the governor's orders, but anyone that we know of that's still open, we've put the list up there and we're trying to maintain it. It's always good to call ahead. We're also helping to run ads in the St. Albans Messenger and in seven days to get the word out about the businesses in, in the city, especially downtown that are, that are still open somehow.
Okay, thank you, Chip. All right, we'll move on to item number four on the agenda, council discussion and questions. I guess I would open it up. Does anyone have any topics? And then we can cover any topics council persons might have and then we'll move to a round robin check in just to see if there's any, any comments that, or questions anyone else has.
Hawkins says he's good.
I would just share one, one Chip, you talked about businesses. We through FCIDC have shared a lot of information that we've received over the last week, 10 days. The concern is going to be moving forward that there's limited resources for business counseling and for loan submission. So SBA and the Small Business Development Center are going to be up to their eyeballs with calls and so there's going to, there's going to be an issue here where many businesses are not going to get responses to their questions or their loan applications or whatever the case might be moving forward. So I would just share that the sooner you get in the queue, probably the better. Be patient and we're willing to help any way we can, but all resources are going to be overwhelmed. So just keep that in mind as you move forward.
Understood.
Anyone have any questions or comments before we go around the council? Hearing none. You said Hawk was set?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How about Jim? Do you have anything to share?
No, I really don't have anything except I've been home, home for two weeks and not a lot going on, so nothing to share.
Thank you. Marie?
No, nothing to share. All's good here.
Maria, do you want to just touch on what you're experiencing at the co-op store?
Yes, as of Saturday, we changed our hours a bit. We're now open eight to five, Monday through Friday, eight to four on Saturday, and we're closed on Sunday now. We're doing curbside. People are to call in their orders, whether it be grain or groceries, and we will pick the orders and call them with a total and take a credit card for payment at that time. And then it goes, you know, they let us know when they're there to pick it up. So I'm fortunate in this respect that I'm on vacation this week, so I have not been there to, to be part of this, but as of next week, I will be. And it's a little different way to do business, but it, you know, it is a way and it's similar to what everybody's doing, so hopefully we'll get through it.
And I understand the co-op was fairly busy over the weekend?
Yes, yes, they were very busy. Well, especially leading up to that curbside service, people were trying to get ahead of that and, you know, picking up. So we were, we were, we've been pretty out straight there the past week, but now it's just kind of a different scenario.
Thanks, Marie.
Yep, thank you.
Kate?
Yeah, you know, as you can imagine, the hospital is a pretty busy place these days. But I want to just take a minute to say thank you, big thank you to Chief and the Police Department for the parade tonight. I know that was greatly appreciated. And for all of his work running the EOC and just staying in touch with us, the work on the alternate care site, all really good partnerships, people working together. That's just, it's just really appreciated. Things at the hospital are as good as they possibly can be at this stage of the game. You know, we have one patient in, admitted currently who is, has tested positive. The census, the overall population of the hospital right now is fairly low, which is good. The work that's going on around preparations is nothing short of incredible. You know, so we feel like we're as prepared as we can be, but being said, we're a little ways away from the peak. We know that for sure. So we just, we just continue to, continue to get after it.
So Kate, are you experiencing similar to Chief in the sense that your traditional healthcare activity, emergency room and others are diminished as well or reduced significantly?
Yes, we think the community has heard the message to, you know, to only come in for essential services. Things have been pretty quiet other than the real, the real needs, which is great. We totally appreciate that. It's really helping.
Good.
I think the other thing that I would just say is, you know, we can't stress enough that the simple things like washing your hands and, and maintaining that social distancing is incredibly important. And I think that we as, you know, representatives of the city have to role model that everywhere we go and everything that we do, that's really, that's the way people are going to get the message.
Good. Anything else? Thanks, Kate. Mike McCarthy?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to emphasize something that Chief Taylor said earlier, which is that law enforcement isn't going to be out enforcing the governor's executive orders to stay home and stay safe in a, in a sort of punitive way. I think I really appreciate the effort to sort of encourage people to stay home and stay safe. But I've gotten a number of calls from constituents who are concerned that if they go out to do some of the things that are allowed under the order that they're going to be stopped by the police. And so I think we would all do well to continue to, to sort of share accurate information, make sure we're sharing the stuff that's coming from healthvermont.gov and other reputable sources. A lot of people seem really scared right now. I don't know if other people are experiencing that or folks are calling them and, or messaging them online and, you know, have read something that's really alarming. But I appreciate everything that I've seen from the city in terms of putting out good information. The legislature is now set up to meet remotely and we're continuing to kind of dig into what the new federal, this third bill will really mean. Vermont's going to get about $1.25 billion in small state set aside, which is a lot more than what we would normally get, thanks to Senator Leahy's efforts. So you know, that, the comments that were made earlier about making sure that we're documenting what specific expenses are going toward COVID-19 efforts are really important. And the governor waited until today, even though we had passed the initial COVID-19 legislation, H742, and then the companion bill that Curry talked about earlier. He waited until today to sign those because, to make sure that it dovetailed with the federal legislation. So that may end up being a big help to us if we end up seeing, you know, delayed property tax payments and the like. You know, I'll tell you, my company has furloughed about 90% of the people at Sun Common. I know many, many other employers are laying people off or furloughing folks en masse. So you know, I was wondering if, you know, it sounded like things are good for the time being, but as we move ahead, I'm wondering if we're going to run into delayed payments or have a lot of requests for people to either make late payments or, or have some kind of forgiveness with their taxes. I'm hoping that some of this federal stimulus money helps people pay their bills on time, but I'm wondering, you know, if, if Tim or Dom, if you're anticipating us, you know, seeing people ask for a lot of deferrals.
Yeah, we're anticipating it. And that we're taking it on a kind of a a case-by-case basis. I think, you know, 1.2 billion is an awful lot of money coming into Vermont and we're optimistic about how that finds its way to Main Street and we don't want to get out in front of that and create the wrong program that has the wrong incentives and benefits the wrong people. So I think our process right now is probably saw the email thread earlier. I think it's well equipped to address specific circumstances. Folks have, are having a tough time. They should get in touch and we can make a plan.
Can I just dovetail off that, Dom, a little bit? I, I had reached out to both Representative McCarthy and Senator Parent to start the discussion about, and, and I preface this very clearly with, with the words that this is not a, definitely not a statewide priority relative to our local option tax and the charter change. And I get that the whole state is in dire need of many things, but from a local community perspective, getting our charter change here this year is, I think will be key to assisting in our recovery. So Mike, I hope you can be the point person on that and, and stay after it. Because that's, I think, I can't stress it enough. I think that's going to be crucial moving forward to get that charter change and be ready to go.
Yeah, if I can follow up on that, the language for the charter change that matches what the voters approved is already drafted. So now that the House is, and it was also sent out for introduction, so I should be able to get it in front of government operations next week, as long as the speaker allows us to maintain this kind of robust remote meeting schedule. So last week we tested out meeting this way, the way that the city council is meeting right now via Zoom. And if we can continue to do that, I don't think we'll have any issue. It'll have to go through two committees in the House. We voted out of the House, go to at least one committee in the Senate, and I think we're going to have a lot more. We're going to have a much easier time in the Senate once it gets out of the House. There are a couple of folks who I think are, are going to be tricky. One of those people has actually been removed from the Ways and Means Committee though, so our pathway may be easier than it was a week ago before that personnel change.
Okay, you don't want to elaborate on that personnel change?
I think if you read the news, the member from Arlington decided to make all of us go down to the State House on Wednesday for no real reasons, but little, little flex of parliamentary procedure.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Chad, what would you like to share with us? You're in the throes of things.
Yeah, we've been pretty busy the last couple of days. So we opened up a testing site down in Putney you may have heard about. So we're doing some testing down there. We're very much like a lot of other folks. We're working a lot from home if you can. Health Operations Center is open. The State Emergency Operations Center is also open to assist us. We're doing a lot of Epi investigations, a lot of vectoring, and the governor and the commissioner are really pushing to see a little bit deeper into what the spread of this really is and, you know, what if some of the measures that the governor has put in, what kind of difference they're making. So that's kind of our work right now. A lot of the other stuff's been put on the back burner. So we're basically Epi Investigations and WIC. That's about all the health department's doing. And it's interesting, some of the folks we're pulling in, so with Epi Investigations, a lot of questions and finding out who you've been in contact with and all that great stuff. They're actually pulled in like 25 law enforcement officers, officers to help with that. So you know, they're going to be able to use their investigation skills and a different front. So that's kind of nice. And we have Coast Guard working with us. We have FEMA people working with us. So everyone's really coming together and I've been in state government for nine years and most of it's usually flood or some kind of weather event and this is kind of different for me. So yeah, it's interesting. So a lot of people learning a lot of new stuff. So, and I don't have anything else except I think the city is doing a good job. I see most folks are abiding by the executive order, so that's good as well. So thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Chad. You know, something just came to light for me relative to our council. And it probably hadn't been very evident because the need wasn't there, but you look at the experience of the counselors on the board and you know, you go right down through, you got, you know, Mike on the legislative side, Kate, healthcare, Chad, Health Department, Marie, retail, Hawk, Tim Hawkins, Legal, and then Jim with Judicial and myself with Economic Development. I don't think you could find a council or a select board that has that width of experience and knowledge when it comes to a crisis such that we're going through now. So once again, it's, it took me two years to realize the depth of the, of the council, but I think it's, and during these times, it's I think we're as probably best prepared with this council than we would be with any other chosen council and select board throughout the state. So I thank you all for your knowledge and experience and I don't know if anyone has any other comments before we adjourn for the night. Council, anything, Dom, anything to share?
We're good.
I have one thing I want to share and this may put a smile on Chief Taylor's face, but I don't know how many meetings I went to about that MedSurg mass care site. And it was one of those things that you, you know, you hope you never have to open, but you know, the, the effort that the Police Department and all our community partners put into that MedSurg Center, including the hospital, tremendous amount of time and effort put into it and the way it came together and the way that everyone's working as, in unison, it really tests to that, to that partnership.
I agree, Chad. Thank you.
So I'll close with thanking everyone. Thank the residents for joining us as well. I would just share, the reason we went with this meeting was we, we were going to have such a long gap between our last meeting and our normal April 13th meeting. We will see how things progress, but I will probably be suggesting to Dom that we at least touch base every couple of weeks. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 13th. I believe that's the Monday. We will be, my, obviously probably back on Zoom as well. But I encourage everyone to stay safe and start to plan your drop cloth for the next meeting.
I will work on it.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Jim's second?
Second.
Second by Marie. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
So moved. All have a good evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
Stay safe.